Okay, folks, it is six o'clock and I am calling the regularly scheduled meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville to order. It's Tuesday, July 11th, and we are in the council chambers of the city. Candace will start with roll call.
Kathy Cobb?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Here.
Todd Casper?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
And the first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation by Lisa Kratz. Lisa, you want to take the podium? She's going to talk to us about Student Welcome Week. It's hard to believe that, you know, we're at the
We are less than
July and we're already talking about I know.
My name is Lisa Kratz. I'm Director of the Marquee Pioneer Student Center on campus. And with me is Abigail Geneva-Coe. She is our Involvement Coordinator for Campus Activities, and she's actually our chief, like, in charge of Welcome Week. So I told her I would kind of kick things off. We come every year just to kind of present to you the schedule of events that are planned for our new students, just to give you all a heads up of what we're doing and then have a chance to answer any questions that you might have for us. So I will start the handout around the room and I will let Abigail kind of hit some highlights.
All right, so, yep, Lisa, pass that around. So as you will see, this is going to be, Welcome Weekend is over Labor Day Weekend. So September 2nd through the 5th, 5th being the first day of the fall classes. So our new students are expected to move in starting Saturday, September 2nd. So right now, we're looking at about a new member or new student class of about 1,200, 1,300 or so. So quite a bit of students moving in on that day. Usually what we do on that first day as students are moving back to campus is a few events on campus, just welcoming the students and their families. So you'll see on the schedule, a parent and family farewell reception, as well as some students getting acquainted with their residence halls, the mandatory residence hall meeting, dining on campus for their first meal in the evening. And then in the afternoon, early evening, we welcome them with an event, what we call Welcome Weekend Kickoff and Play Fair. So this event is on the East Turf Practice Field, which is right off of J Street and Southwest. And so this event, the students take their class photo, as well as get, hear remarks from the chancellor, provost, students senate president, and just welcoming them to UW-Platteville. And then we end the event with what we say is Play Fair, which is a large icebreaker where we have new students meet one another. And this event can get quite a little bit loud with, we have speakers and sound. And so that's just something to note there as well. Sunday, September 3rd, we have some events happening on campus, just opportunities for students to walk around and learn their schedule, go on a scavenger hunt. We have one of our kind of involvement fair type events, which we call Bridge Fest, which is outside of Bridgeway Commons and our engineering hall. This event is where we welcome student organizations to host tables and booths to interact and engage new students. And then in the evening, we have our Residence Life Block Party, which is over by our block halls, Dobson Hall, Moro Hall, over kind of on the west side of campus. And so our Residence Life hosts an event with inflatables, food, things like that. One of our new events that we haven't done in the last few years is called Late Night Paint Glow Party. So on, in the PAC parking lot, our Pioneer Activity Center parking lot between, it's kind of on the Championship Drive near the Marquee Pioneer Student Center, we're going to be actually hosting a large event that has a DJ and paint cannons and just basically a large paint party, where you get paint thrown on you and dance and all that kind of fun thing. So that would be something, just to note that in the evening from around like 9:00 to 10:30, 11:00, some additional amplified sound happening in that area. Monday, September 4th, we again have some opportunities for students to walk around campus, learn their schedule, some other events that target some of our important information that we need to share with new students, with the sex ed bingo, opportunities to learn more about different organizations, like Get the Scoop on Greek Life. And then we end that Monday evening with our annual Pizza Palooza and Outdoor Movie Event. So the students have been voting all summer at New Student Orientation about what movie they would like to see. So we have a few different options that they've been voting on. So hopefully they'll have a clear winner at the end and we'll be able to choose that. But so they'll be able to eat pizza from some of our local pizza places, as well as watch that movie on our west lawn, which is near the Williams Field House and right next to the west of the Marquee Pioneer Student Center. So just another note of some amplified sound during that evening as well. We are picking a shorter movie, so it won't extend too much into the evening. Just some additional things, the first week of school. So the first day of classes is Tuesday, September 5th. We have an event called Pioneer's First Day, where we basically celebrate that students are having their first day of college. They may be having their last first day of college if they're a senior and other just first day of the fall semester celebrations. So we'll have some photo opportunities, some free things for students to grab, as well as in the afternoon around campus in different locations, we're going to have academic open houses. So each of our academic departments and colleges are creating their own events. These events might have music. They may have food, different things like that for students to get acquainted with their faculty. And then another event that is kind of a little bit different than what we've done in the past is a merchant fair. So we're working with the Chamber on an event to bring local businesses in to campus on Wednesday, September 6th, and also Thursday, September 7th. So this is kind of a little bit spin off of what we used to do in the past, the Merchant Scavenger Hunt. So this will be an opportunity for local businesses to meet and get face-to-face interaction with new students as well as returning students. So we will be kind of pushing out, there was, in the news in a nutshell, a little bit of information about this this past week, but we'll be having more information on how to register for this event coming out soon through the Chamber. This is basically an opportunity for businesses to bring coupons, promotional items, job applications, food or beverage samples, just basically anything they want to do to help acquaint students with what they, what business they have in the community, what role they play, and however they want to do that. So this is a free event for vendors or for businesses to sign up for, but more information will be coming out about that soon. So that kind of wraps up a lot of the major events that we're having over Welcome Weekend, Labor Day Weekend, and into the first week of classes. Anything you wanted to add, Lisa?
I know we always say that we're happy to share the schedule with you. You are more than welcome to join us on campus for any of these events and help meet the students and greet them. We hope, last year, we had a really excited, engaged class of new students. So we're hoping for that this year again, too, now that we're kind of out of pandemic mode and that they will jump right in and get involved. So, yeah, should be great. We're happy to answer any questions you might have as well.
Any questions from council members?
I have a question. Maybe I missed it here. Are there going to be any events at the stadium?
Um, we normally don't have any events at the stadium just because of athletic practices. It's usually kind of difficult for us to overlap with the practices for between soccer and football. So we right now use the practice field, which is, I guess, kind of adjacent from the stadium as one of our major event spaces.
You have, I was thinking about night events.
Night events. We don't have any at the stadium at this time, but we do have a few different night events, like the one in the Williams Field House Pioneer Activity Center parking lot, and then over by the residence halls. So try to move them around a little bit. Yeah. Harder to get access to that stadium. They're practicing hard over there.
Hey, any other questions? Otherwise, we're, we're excited that you're going to welcome 1,200 plus, maybe 1,300 students to your community, to ARFAMIN. So thank you very much and
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Okay. All right, we'll move on then on our agenda. The next item is consideration of the Consent Calendar or Consent Agenda, pardon me. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please let me know if you want separate discussion and action on any of the items. First is the council minutes from June 27th. Payment of bills, the financial report for June, appointments to boards and commissions, and tonight I have several to the Plan Commission, Barb Stockhausen for a partial term ending May 1, 2024, and Tad Leonard to a three-year term ending May 1, 2026, to the Museum Board, Larry Bowden, and that's a four-year term that will expire or continue through 6/31/2027, to the Commission on Aging, Chuck Bonin and Samantha Stasko, and to the Broski Center Care Committee, Sherry Engelke, Cindy Tang, Beth Kaiser, Dimitri Andrews. Those are all people being reappointed. And then ICI has chosen Eileen Nichols as their rep to the Broski Center Care Committee. So those are the appointments. Licenses, there's a license for a temporary Class B license to serve fermented malt beverages. This would go to the friends of the Mining and Rallo Jameson Museum for Mine Day, which is the 12th of August. And then a bike ride permit for the Platteville Public Library for the community bike ride on Friday, July 28th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM on the Mound View Park paved trail.
Move to approve Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jason and a second by Kathy to approve the Consent Agenda. Candace will vote.
Cobb?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, under citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any, it's customary for those people who want to speak on an agenda item, and that's why I have some green sheets, for that to speak when that agenda item comes. I don't have any other particular, particular agenda items or particular items. I would just point out to council members that our museum director has become a father since our last meeting. And so we will, Sarah and Eric welcomed a little baby boy. Now, I can't remember when, and I can't remember the name, sorry about that. But nonetheless, so, so we don't see him here tonight. I assume he's doing a little bit of leave here for parenting and, and getting to know his new baby. Any upcoming events for anybody's committee? Kathy?
Want to announce that the annual fly-in, drive-in breakfast at the Platteville Municipal Airport is happening on Sunday, July 30th from 7:00 to 12:00. The proceeds go to the Platteville Scouts. The med flight's going to be there depending on their availability, EMS Fire Department, the Car Club will be there, but it's a great breakfast. Encourage everybody to come out and you can take a plane, a 20-minute plane ride for $30. So that's coming up July.
And I would point out that coming up also before our next meeting would be the Southwest Music Fest that the Chamber sponsors, and also the Car Cruise on Main. I believe those are both on, on a Saturday, the
Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday at the end of this week. We hadn't, you know, the 4th of July kind of messed up some of us because we had too many Mondays and too many Fridays in the week. So, all right, moving on to the reports in the committee, in the packet, the Airport Commission reports, Kathy, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Water and Sewer Commission, Ken, anything to add?
No addition.
The Museum Board is vacant, so please read those minutes. The Commission on Aging, Kathy?
Nothing further to report.
Yeah, and you're all moved in?
They're all moved in.
Okay. The Housing Authority Board, Lynn? Okay, other reports in your packets were the Water and Sewer Financial Report for June, the Airport Financial Report for June, a task force, the Task Force on Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Update. And, and now I lost my place. And Department Progress Reports. Any comments, questions on the reports? Okay. Then we'll may move on to the action items on our agenda tonight. The first of which is Ordinance 23-04, Amending Parking for Police Vehicles. Howard?
Yes, thank you. With the addition of the Senior Center parking near City Hall, there are concerns by the Police Department that they will need two stalls for, for their on-duty police vehicles. Traditionally, they park in the two stalls on North Forest Street, immediately south of Furnace Street. The Police Department is requesting an ordinance of designating these two stalls for on-duty police vehicles only. I have the ordinance and I have a map showing the two stalls, yellow with perimeter and red up, up on the north end. We had a question last time regarding the Senior Center parking. We, I adjusted the map a little bit so that you could see all that parking. The, the Senior Center parking that we had adopted previously is closer to City Hall, and it's in green on this map near the bottom. So it, it has no direct impact on the Senior Center parking. So recommend approval.
Okay, questions on the request to adopt Ordinance 2304, which would make two stalls at the north end of Fourth Street by Furnace Street, on-duty police vehicles only. Question?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. I commend the Chief of Police and whoever improved this map that I pointed out last time was not very clear as to what was being shown. There were vehicles out of alignment and so forth. So it was a pleasure to read and not have to search and figure out what it was supposed to say. So I'll say thank you.
That's all Howard and our GIS specialist.
Okay, who's GIS here?
It's Austin Kopernol. He is contract GIS person with Southwest Regional Planning Commission.
Okay. So I appreciate that because frankly, I only have so much time to read things. And so if something is not very readable, it makes it difficult. Thank you.
Lynn, did you have a question?
I was just wondering, I think I asked my own question, I would agree, what was, was there now? What is there now? Like, this is open space that we're just going to designate to the police officers, correct?
That, that's correct. I mean, they, they normally park there. It's just that with the addition of the extra vehicles, sometimes people have parked there. Yeah.
Park there, there's a fine? Is it a fine related if someone else just parks there?
Yeah, if somebody parks in a parking spot that's not designated, that's designated otherwise, yes, there would be, and they get a ticket, there would be a fine.
There's a sign that's going up or something, or is it just, how are we going to designate it?
There would, there would, there will be a sign, but it has to be after approval tonight.
I'm just wondering.
And publication, right?
Yeah, and publication, correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on parking for police vehicles, Ordinance 23-04?
I don't have a question, but I would just like to have it re-verified at our last meeting that this is the first time the Police Department has ever asked for specific parking.
As far as I recall.
Previously, when we were in this building, we had reserved parking spaces on Mineral Street. This is the first time that we have done it
Okay.
in recent memory.
Yeah, so it's not, my point is, it's not something that we're doing all the time. Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'd seek a motion.
I move to approve Ordinance 2304 and Ordinance Amending.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Ken to adopt Ordinance 23-04. Candace will vote.
Cobb?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is an Ordinance Amending Speed Limits Adjacent to Some Parks. Howard?
Yes, thank you. With the recent addition of the inclusive playground and the additional parking and sidewalks from the CDVG grant and other, and other activities up there on the north side, there's more traffic near Smith Park by the pool and Legion Park. State Statute 346.57, subparagraph 4, subparagraph I, allows cities to create a 15 mile per hour speed limit adjacent to parks when children are present, similar to a school zone. And the city attorney confirms that we can use this authority for certain parks, but we don't have to do it for all of them. Staff recommends using this authority specifically for the streets adjacent to those three parks. Last time, we had a question on what that statute actually reads. So I have a copy of that included in the packet right there. That's verbatim out of Wisconsin statutes. This ordinance would repeal the ordinance in 2002 establishing the 15 mile per hour between Memorial Day and Labor Day on Pitt and Sylvia Street, and basically establish the same speed limit when children are present. So we have an ordinance and I have a map here that shows basically in red the, the streets that are recommended for this ordinance.
Okay, and for those in the audience, the map is on the television, sort of the monitor on the south side of the wall. And for council members, it's in front of you on the monitor. Okay, questions or comments? Ken?
My question is, how long will the speed limit be up? Will this speed limit be up year-round by Camp Street, Sylvia Street, and Pitt? A question I believe that came up last time.
Yes. This, this speed limit would be year-round whenever children are present. So if
But that, that's to me the issue. Now you're qualifying it by saying when children are present. So if they want to go to Smith Park, how long will Smith Park be open this year as far as time? We don't have the Parks and Rec person here. So how long will this be open through usage by children?
Isn't Smith?
And older people?
Isn't Smith Park open year-round? It's open year-round.
It's open year-round. I, I would defer to Bob to, for any guidance on that. But as far as I'm, as far as I know, the playgrounds and other activities are open year-round. I mean, not the pool, of course, but
So what are you, you're going to make any? My question is, are you going to make an exception for the pool, that street? Or just make it 18, 15 miles per hour and that's it?
Well, the, the condition is when children are present. If there are no children present, then, then it reverts back to the normal 25 mile per hour city speed limit.
I, I think, to me, it seems like you're putting yourself in trouble by saying that when children are present.
Chief, do you want to speak to that? I mean, we have that right now in school zones, right?
Correct.
I mean, a school zone is established with a sign like this that says it's 15 miles per hour when children are present.
Correct. And it's enforceable. I mean, the officers utilize discretion, and that's backed up by squad video and their observations.
But still, you're going to go, are the officers are going to go out and check along this, this road area and see if any children are present?
If they're in that area and they observe a vehicle traveling at a, a speed limit that appears to be in excess of that, they would document their observations and follow that up with the traffic stop and radar equipment.
Why don't you just leave it 15 miles per hour year-round and period?
This seemed like a nice adjustment to make in terms of, Howard and I have both gotten feedback about complaints about there being a 15 mile an hour speed limit at 2:00 AM during the summer. This seemed like a good compromise.
So this is in essence like establishing a school zone, but it's a play zone.
In a
And a school zone, to establish a school zone, it doesn't have to be adjacent to a school either. I mean, you can have a 15 mile per hour when children are present on a street that doesn't have a school if that's where children are walking all the time. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. Other questions?
Yeah, I'm, have been on, on the fence a little bit about this. But my concern is that it will be really a significant change because the community is so used to that 15 mile an hour speed limit from Memorial Day to Labor Day on Sylvia and Pitt. And if, what is the, the plan for educating the public? I mean, is there, you said something, Barb, that kind of struck me as far as there's such a thing like a sign? I mean, this is going to take significant
Right. And anytime there's a change, we accompany that with signage and education. It's not like right away where we start issuing citations.
Okay.
It's something that you want to bring people, no pun intended, but up to speed on what the changes have been and make sure that they are set up for success.
And in some ways, it won't be a change because right now it's 15 miles an hour September or Memorial Day to Labor Day. And let's face it, that most times that aren't, then there will, children will be in school.
That's what our hope was.
Yeah, children would be at school. Any other questions?
The question is not answered. How long are you going to keep Smith Park open?
Again. But if to check, I think our, our hours on open parks is 10 o'clock. Is, is that the question?
10:30.
10:30.
The Smith Park, how long will it stay open? As long as it doesn't get snowed in?
It's open year-round.
We don't close.
It's going to be year-round. So that one will be 15 year-round.
Only if children are
When children are present. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think we, people walk the loop around Smith Park all year. I mean, I, that, that park is open all the time. Are you asking about specifically the newly installed inclusive playground, or are you talking about Smith Park?
Smith Park, the red that's shown here, how long will that be open as far as the year-round?
Park remains open all year-round. I don't think there's any time of the year where we're shutting down, saying that you don't have access to use the park.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Does anybody have any motion they'd like to propose?
I move to approve Ordinance 2305 and Ordinance Amending Speed Limit Adjacent to Park.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Lynn and a second by Jason to adopt this ordinance, which changes the speed limit along Pitt, part of North part of North Second, Sylvia, part of North Fourth and Camp Street to fifteen miles an hour when children are present. Okay, we will vote, Candace. Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. The next item on our agenda is uh resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two reimbursement of um expenditure, official intent to reimburse expenditures. This has to do with lead service lines. Howard?
Correct. As part of the revamp on lead service lines, um, when we uh put in our applications, they reminded us that um, that we we will probably not get the entire amount as a grant. Some of it will be as a loan and what it's saying is this is saying that if we spend money prior to um getting the loan documents finalized that that we, the city, you, the city, are authorizing that those early reimbursements be, early expenditures being reimbursed from the loan. Um, I don't intend to spend money prior to getting any of this sorted out from DNR, but it is a requirement and so um, we're asking that you do this. It's the same language that we did for the generator project down at the wastewater plant.
Okay, so this is a resolution to allow the city to uh if we spend money before uh that-
Before the loan-
Before the loan paperwork comes in that we can get reimbursed. Uh, yeah, it's typical, I'm sorry, this is going to sound terrible, but it's typical government paperwork. Okay, any questions? Uh, Howard, how many of the, how many lead service line uh grants have we gotten?
We had I can't remember whether it's three or four from starting in two thousand and seventeen. Um, and, yeah, we we had, we had over six hundred and now we've got a hundred and ten left.
They're making good progress on the replacement, so that's good. All right, do I have questions or does someone have a action to propose?
Move to approve like resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jason and a second by Kathy to adopt resolution twenty-three twenty-two. Uh Candace will vote. Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the nomination of a person to uh fill the seat uh of District Three from now until the next election, which is in April. So um, I will call and uh I I think uh Clint um uh laid a paper in front of you about the appointment procedure. So the first thing you anybody can make a nomination. No one has to make a nomination. There could be one nomination, there could be no nominations, there could be two nominations. After the nominations are uh made, uh then we'll vote. And uh Candace has passed out uh ballots. Um, you would write the name of the person you would vote for on that and then Candace would take it and read it aloud. So it's not a secret ballot, but it is a I would call it a personal val- ballot.
I would also ask that you write your name on the piece of paper so that I know where it came from once I collect them all.
So that she knows no one voted twice.
Thank you.
I believe. Okay, and uh if you don't want to vote, you don't have to vote. So um, so at this point, I would open the floor for nominations.
I'll nominate Lucas Dresden.
Okay, do I hear a second? For that nomination? I'm assuming I can second. I'll second. Do I have any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Bob Gates.
I'll second.
And we have a second for that nomination. Um, I would at this point entertain a motion since there are, well, I guess I could ask, is there any other nominations? I mean, there were no other candidates, so I'm assuming there are no other nominations. This time I'd entertain a motion to close nominations.
So moved?
And I need a second for that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So the nominations are closed and so I would ask you to take your piece of paper to write the name of the person you wish to get this position on that piece of paper along with your name and Candace will be along to pick those up and then read the ballot. You read the ballot uh and who cast the vote? Okay. Okay, uh Candace, I think we're ready if you want to. And uh for those of you who were here before Grace was here when we did that, I I was very pleased that we had two, two wonderful candidates. It takes a while and uh I would say that the uh six uh that the way we get people is by asking. And uh and if uh without asking, you don't get candidates. When are you uh?
Okay, for, excuse me, for Bob Gates, I have um four votes. And it was from Barb Dos, Kathy Cop, Ken Killian and Todd Casper. And for Lucas Dresden, I have two votes from Jason Arts and Lynn Parrot. So Mr. Gates will-
So Mr. Gates will uh fill the seat and uh he will be sworn in at our next meeting, after which we'll have a little uh uh
Orientation.
City staff has worked to update the orientation materials we have and the very thick book that everybody got with all of the documents, so uh we will be distributing that. Uh, okay. Next item on our agenda then is uh the letter of appreciation of, is that what we called it? Just say, letter of thanks uh for legislators and the governor. And uh why are we doing this? Um, for ten years, uh and and I'm gonna start for ten, well, actually for twenty years. About twenty years, the amount of shared revenue that we received as a city was held steady. At two point, just a little over two and a half million dollars. It didn't matter if the costs went up. The only way we could get more money was through asking taxpayers to pay more on their property tax. So uh there was a coalition, uh and we were, we've done fairly well because we've been fiscally responsible, but there are other cities and other villages and other towns that found themselves in a terrible conundrum as prices went up. You, we've, we've approved things about we know how much it costs to do a street. It's a whole lot more to do a street now than it used to be and how I had Howard tell me how much we used to be able to buy in terms of thin overlay with our um wheel tax. And uh that was implemented maybe ten years ago and and we can buy about half as much now. So prices have gone through the roof, so um, a coalition that included the towns, cities, villages, towns, cities and villages, yeah. And and the counties-
Yes, ma'am.
Got together and uh worked with legislators and worked with the governor's office to bring change to the state shared revenue formula. So henceforth, after the signing of these bills, the cities uh that these municipalities will get one cent of the current five cent sales tax. So there's no raise in sales tax. There's a redirection, I guess I would say, of where sales tax goes. So twenty percent of sales tax or one cent of the five cents will now be allocated to municipal governments, whether they be counties, cities, villages or townships. And Clint, what does that mean for Platteville?
So for the city of Platteville, you're looking currently at an existing county aid or what our share is of approximately two million four hundred and seventy-one thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars. In twenty twenty-four, they're anticipating then this new uh additional one of the five cents is going to equate to five hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars for a total state aid package of three million five fifty-seven dollar, fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. Uh and with it too, the package also includes that it's hinged, of course, with the economy and how sales go with uh projected increases. So not only does the supplement, the one on the five, uh the one of the five cents go up, but then also our other state original package is supposed to also increase uh with CPI and with with cost of living.
And so um, actually Clint and I and Nicola, you were on the call today. Were you the Nicola they were referring to? Yeah, because Nicola had a question. Uh, the second Tuesday, is this the second Tuesday of the month? The Wisconsin League of Municipalities has a roundtable call. Uh, and at least one, if not two or three of us from Platteville generally sit in. Uh, I would say that the majority of towns and or the majority of people on that call have either adopted resolutions or sent letters or something uh sent uh of thanks. So I tried to craft a pretty uh uh generic. I mean, to me, this isn't political. To me, this is realism as it applies to the budget. So I will read the letter that I crafted, uh first of all, for uh the state senator uh Mark Line and then the assembly people Travis Tranel, Todd Novak and Tony Kurtz, who we worked with. Thank you, thank you, thank you. These are words that very inadequately express our most sincere appreciation for all of your work to overhaul the state's shared revenue program. As you know, Platteville collaborated with our representative organization, the League of Wiscon- Wisconsin Municipalities, assembling information that documented the last decade of flat payments with regard to shared revenue. We also provided information about increases in operational expenditures, many due to price increases of the products and services that are required in our city. We are hopeful these were helpful as you deliberated, negotiated, compromised and ultimately adopted the overhaul. Our city looks better to, uh looks forward to a better future for our citizens and particularly for the emergency services we provide and the streets that we maintain. Again, thank you with sincere appreciation. And these additional dollars do have some quote unquote strings attached in terms of uh expenditures for emergency services, police, fire and ambulance and transportation, streets, those kinds of things.
Are different requirements for maintenance of efforts to make sure that we're ma- maintaining compliance with uh keeping those existing services in place.
Okay, and the good, the letter to the governor is much the same. Uh, it has a few few word changes because uh it, well, just because that he he doesn't craft the budget, he just has to eventually sign it. Um, but it basically is the same letter. And so we br- I bring these uh with the hope that our council would uh endorse sending these letters and also would sign these letters of thanks to our legislators and to the governor. Discussion. Lynn?
Can we fix my last name, please?
Oh, yes. We'll put a second T on it. I thought it was on there. Yeah, it is on one letter. Look at the second letter.
At the bottom.
Right.
But at the top.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if you could get my name spelled right too, that'd be great.
Oh, Todd, how did I get a C in your name?
I don't know. You don't probably want me to answer.
Okay, we'll get that done.
Just a correction, Killian?
Is this the right Ken Killian?
Down.
About right.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to endorse this with the requested uh changes?
Um, well, I just lost it. I will
I can go. I'll move to approve the letter of appreciation as presented and as amended. And to have the city clerk send to our local state legislators and our governor's office.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jason and a second by Lynn to uh approve these letters and send them off after the spellings are corrected of names. Um, Candace will vote. Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Back, uh that is the last of our uh action items. So now we will move to information and discussion. First item being the ordinance prohibiting parking on Camp Street from Kelly Avenue to Western Avenue by Westview Elementary School. And we'll start this with uh staff presentation. Howard?
Yes, thank you. Uh, the school district has recognized the traffic has been a problem near uh Westview Elementary School. They're currently doing a project to create a what entrance on Western Avenue extending a long driveway on the north side of the school uh to create a uh drop off and pickup zone for children. There are concerns that parents will try to bypass the line and park on Western Avenue or on on Camp Street. Um, uh, they they feel that uh parents will encourage their children to cross the pavement in front of cars in the designated drop off zone and potentially cross either Camp or Western to get into a car. Uh, the proposed ordinance mimics the signage and enforcement on streets surrounding the middle school, specifically Madison and Second Street. It would prohibit parking on both sides of the street from seven thirty AM to four thirty PM. Um, we have had some uh some people call and talk about things. Um, quite honestly, what I see are are potentially four different options. Um, one is to do nothing, basically leave it to school faculty and staff and potentially the community resource officer to uh set expectations. What I was told this morning, set expectations to use the drop off and pickup lane and not the street. We could pass this as written. It would be consistent with the middle school, same signs, same ordinance, uh same training, same you know, it would reduce the number and types of signs that we have uh uh be easier on the police department for enforcements. Uh, and it would be a maximum safety thing for the schoolchildren. The biggest negative is there would be no parking for residents of that street on either side of the street. Another possibility would be to pass with limited hours. Uh, say, uh during morning and afternoon uh pickup times. Uh, it would improve safety. It would be working with the residents and limiting those times. Um, but it would be inconsistent with what is there, uh what is around the middle school and it would make sign making and enforcement a little more difficult. Another one, another option would be to pass this on the north side only. One thing would be is that um, it would improve safety by not having children crossing the road. Um, uh, parking for visitors of residents would be on the drop off lane. But one of the negatives would be that it would still encourage children to uh cross vehicles in that drop off lane, go across that drop off lane where parents are pulling in and out to get to the street and all. So um, uh- I have, uh, Principal Ryder here to, uh, talk about the area around her school and, uh, explain explain what the school district is looking for.
Okay, Renee, you want to come to the microphone?
Good evening, I'm Renee Ryder. I'm the principal at Westview Elementary. I, you see the map up there and I think, um, Howard did a good job of describing why we're making this request. Some additional things I might add, um, a question I got is why would we, I guess both sides are asked for because not only do kids cross from, if I can point to the map or I get it. Yeah, okay. So not only do kids cross from across there to here, if parents are dropping off, you're waiting here, they walk through here and park across. With this, is that there's actually two lanes in this and as
You can come back to the microphone now.
If you're just looking from the outside, you may only see the street, but as employees, we see what happens in the parking lot. And there's constantly, um, parents either calling kids across that space for pickup or crossing them through as other people are pulling out and they don't, they, you don't, may not always see them. And I guess, um, I'm, I think that I understand why people wouldn't want it to mimic the middle school and have parking gone all, all day. Um, I, but I do think I'd request that you consider, um, the limited at least for in the morning hours from seven thirty to eight thirty AM and then from three to four. So that parents are encouraged to use that lane. As much as you say we can, um, um, help them learn, if it's not expected, they're not necessarily going to do it. Any questions?
Okay, questions?
Thank you.
Would you be, would you be opposed to, um, having it during pickup and or during certain periods of the day?
No, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I would, it would need to be like seven, seven, probably seven to eight thirty or a little before seven thirty probably. And then, um, at least starting at three, because if you've been to Westview, people start lining up in our lane at about two forty-five, even though nobody picks up till three fifteen, three twenty. Um, and so probably about three till at least four. And I think giving it four would also benefit because if we have after-school events or there, there's sporting events, then there would be enough parking between the two parking lots and the street for when there's middle school basketball there.
I'm also concerned like when you all have events there with the children, where would parents park? We'd start pushing parking off to U Street, uh.
Yes, I.
The only other concern.
Yes, I, I recognize that.
Has this went to any other residents? Like, do the residents, are they, how they feel about that?
There's some people here to talk.
Yeah, there, I have, I have other people.
Pushing this back there, okay.
Yeah.
Cause I park over there.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've had, uh, two people register to speak about this. Uh, they are speaking, uh, I have had nobody register except for natives speak in favor of it. And I've had two people, uh, Fritz and Luanna Domon, uh, to, uh, speak against it. So, uh, do you guys want to come to the microphone together or you want to come one at a time? You will go separately. Okay, Luanna, you're first. All right, it's fine.
Well, I'm going to read my comments because I don't want to confuse you. Uh, we received, what the, my first excuse me. The first thing I would say is we received the letter about this on July first with the cancel date set for July eleventh. Very short notice with vacations possible. This should never happen with less than thirty days' notice. To prohibit all parking on both sides of Camp Street between Kelly and Western would be doing a great disservice to the retired and elderly persons living on that stretch. Of the eight houses, four of them are retired people. It is common for those people to have social activities during the day with persons attending that would not be able to park and walk to the residents' houses. And by the way, social activities are very important to the elderly. When the vote took place for the staging area at Westview, we assumed that was to take care of the street parking and the safety of the children. Now we're being asked to sacrifice in order to train the parents. Please consider these points because I feel that this is very unfair to the folks living on Camp Street. If you would consider these part, give us at least one side of the street. Thank you.
Hey Fred. By the way, I, I was supposed to ask you to introduce yourself first and give your address, so.
My name is Fred Domon. I live on Camp Street, twelve ten Camp Street.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, social life for old people is extremely important. I don't know if you ever watch television, but this topic comes up frequently. Uh, now, it is true that, uh, Wisconsin does have a statute that says, uh, well, you have it in front of you. It's written in the, uh, blue ink there. Basically, it says, the statue says no parking on the school side of the street. But then it says, however, this subsection shall not apply to villages, towns, or cities when the village or town board or common council thereof by ordinance permits parking of any vehicle or of school buses only on the side of specified highways adjacent to the school. So you have it in your power to let us old fogies have a someplace for our friends to park. Now, you know, we old people don't have our, we don't, we don't do parties at night. If we have a social function, it's going to be during the day. So, uh, I beg you, let us park and, and, and also, wouldn't it be possible to post a sign on the south side of Camp Street by the school there where parents like to park? Wouldn't it be possible to post a sign that says, uh, something to the effect of no pickup or, you know, uh, un- unlawful to, uh, drop or pick up students, uh, in that stretch. Guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Question Fred, would you be willing to, uh, go with the, uh, compromise of of a certain times of the day where they do the loading and the unloading and leave it at that?
Well, if we have to, uh, if we have to choose one of his options, I guess I would say, yeah, that would be the best that, you know, would prohibit parking from seven to eight and three to four or something, but, but, um, example, we, we have a card party every Thursday afternoon. Goes from, uh, two to three thirty.
Okay, thank you.
About four cars. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, any other considerations, any other uh, questions of staff or suggestions to staff?
I'm, I think I have a question. Westview Elementary, I don't remember the year, went through a major.
Right.
They found out that they had a problem with pickup and drop-off. So the latest referendum was approved. I want to say it was about a half a million dollars to fix that problem. They not anticipate.
So Renee, you want to come back to the microphone?
Be where, I mean, their traffic pattern? I guess I'm, if I was, um, a property owner there, I, I would not be very happy if I was not. But I say that the, I voted for the referendum because of that safety issue at Westview. But if I lived there, I don't think I'd be too happy to now have to give up um, parking and be inconvenienced, especially if there is an option. And I mean, if incoming, you know, the parents are coming in in the fall, they, they need to be trained on what the taxpayers voted for with that referendum. That this is going to, I mean, it's not, it's not even done, right? And we have, we're anticipating an issue.
So Renee.
What if it still doesn't work? I mean, what if there's, and if.
Renee, do you want to speak to that, please?
So just to clarify, are you asking it isn't done and what if it still doesn't work? What if the no parking doesn't work or if what if the, the lane doesn't work?
So.
What, what if the, the way the, the referendum was passed with the, the new way to fix the problem? What if we weren't here tonight and that? And that happened? I mean,
And you just said that.
Anticipating issues?
I guess I'm trying to be proactive based on my observations over the last, um, seven years at Westview and how the traffic flows and how parents, um, approach picking up their children. We have a system set up now that many, and many parents don't like to wait in a line. And so they'll park along the road and either have their child walk to them or walk over to get them. And some parents stay on the sidewalks and follow those rules, but not everybody does that. So I guess this request is knowing the patterns of parents over the last seven years and watching that happen. And no matter, we have tried to train them on what our expectations are. Um, if you remember, we tried to make traffic go certain ways. We've tried many different ways to, um, and since COVID, we've had people dropping part of the half of the student body up on Union Street, which isn't great either because that's causing another issue up there. And so we, we're not going to have any, we're, we don't want them dropped up there either. We want everybody using our lane and the parking lot. Um, and that would be amazing if parents, if I could go to every parent and say, this is how we're going to do it and they would do it that way. But just based on my observations and how things go, that has never occurred. And I don't know, um, I'm sure there's people here who have kids at Westview who have observed this also.
So Renee, how many cars will your drive take?
I mean, I think you're, you have two drives. Yes, it's one drive and the way it works is they pull in and you can either go to the right to pull, like, everybody would be on the right. Um, and then you can, or you can go to the left to turn into the parking lot. And we have the, we've talked about the positioning of that. And then if you're in the right lane, you're there to drop off or pick up. You're staying in that lane. But once your child gets out, it's we're, the reason we're not having parking in front during these times is so once your child gets out, you don't have to wait for that person to go forward like it is now. So there's a lot of waiting sometimes when somebody is messing with their child getting out in or out. And so you can pull out and go around and still get out. Um, there's about, I think we said it can fit about forty-five cars in that lane. Um, which if people use that, that should take that almost all that traffic off of Camp, Camp Street and Western, which would be amazing because it's blocking driveways, it's blocking the buses, it's blocking traffic the way it is now. So if anybody, most people try to avoid Camp Street in Westview at starter and when we're getting in or out of school.
So what's your communication plan? Do you have a communication plan or a training program?
Right. So what we would be doing is putting together a video that would demonstrate how this process would work and what the expectations are along with a newsletter that goes through the expectations in our school handbook, which gets approved tomorrow. Those expectations were put in there, which parents are, when they register to sign off on the handbook. So yes, we have a plan to demonstrate to parents in a video format of what it should look like for drop-off and pickup and then also in writing. And then the police department with our resource officer has agreed to be at Westview for the first week or two to help make sure everything is going smoothly, smoothly along with staff.
Okay, and my recollection is you said you would, um, I mean, a compromise for you would be, um, on school days during pickup and or drop-off in the morning from say seven to eight thirty and during pickup in the afternoon, which you say is what, two thirty to?
Uh, I would say we could get away with three to four.
Three to four. If you want to go back to the microphone, you can go back to the microphone, but, okay, so does anybody have any questions of Renee?
Mine was just gonna, it was related to the resource officer, but it sounds like there's a plan to have that person assist with the transition as well.
Anybody else have questions of Renee? Okay, Luanna, this is, I just.
Real quick, Renee, that I appreciate the fact that you're being proactive. It's, it's, I get it, but, you know.
Are you pointing this out to Renee?
Yeah, to all of you. In the state statutes, I gave you all a copy of the state's safety zone statutes.
Right.
If you look at one eighteen zero nine safety zones, it's on the front page. One eighteen point oh nine and look at item number three actually says that all loading and unloading of pupils at the school, whether transported by a public or private vehicle, shall take place in the safety zones. That means on the school grounds.
And I, and I believe that that probably, uh, uh, is what Renee is talking about. Uh, but she's also saying you can't control the behavior of everybody. You can control the behavior of buses or other transit that brings people, but you probably can't control the behavior of everyone. I think we know that. Well, that's true. They could be. All right, um, any other questions or any other, uh, suggestions for staff?
I think the, the next time this comes in, perhaps the, the clarification of some options, so they're written out, so we have some choice.
So we have a choice. Okay.
Compromises, that would be great.
That'd be great. Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item then, uh, for discussion tonight is the proposed tax increment finance district. Um, and I believe, Joe, you get to introduce this.
Sure thing. Uh, yeah, so, uh, the previous meeting, we had a little bit of background on tax increment finance districts, which uh, the districts we have in Platteville, what we've used them for, et cetera. And I think it was mentioned last time, we have an opportunity now, uh, due to our value falling below the cap of twelve percent to, uh, draft a new district. Um, which the staff is definitely in favor of because, uh, as you may be aware now that this is our prime economic development tool that the city has available to promote economic development. Um, so we want to take advantage of this opportunity um, and explore the idea of creating an additional TIF district, TID nine. Um, so Delta Three is working on a draft plan, which we'll go through this evening. Uh, we, just a little bit more information, we did present it to the Plan Commission, uh, last night. Uh, had a very good discussion, a lot of questions from the Plan Commission, some comments from the public. Uh, but they did recommend that we move forward with creating that district. So, uh, Dan will provide some additional information on the proposed.
And, and prior to Dan starting, as he comes to the microphone, uh, I have, uh, the link to the uh, session that uh, Nicola, the work session that Nicola did for us on what is a tid, how does it work and all of that was shared with all the plan commission members. And I had several comment that they had not only watched it, but thought that it was very well done and helped them in their understanding. So uh, thank you again, Nicola, for doing that for us. And for making it available, I think it's available at any time on our uh, YouTube channel now. Um. I don't know if we have to pay royalties every time people look or what, but we'll move on. Dan, you're up.
Thank you. Uh, Dan Dresden with Delta Three Engineering. Um, as Joe said, we've been working with city staff on uh, creating a draft uh, project plan for tid number nine. Um, this is part of the same presentation that I gave last night at the plan commission meeting. I'm fast forwarding through the first part since we did do a work session last time on what tip is. So everybody's familiar with that. And we also talked about what the purpose of tid number nine is. So um, so we're going to get started here by talking about what the tid number nine boundary looks like. Um. It's the area that's bounded by red. Um, it includes portions of tid number five, which is located in blue as well as portions of tid number six, which are indicated in green. Uh, the idea here is that no developed properties or minimal developed properties are included in this. Um, one addition that came out of, potential addition that came out of this was um, the addition of. Mark. That was excluded because we considered it developed. However, uh, he mentioned the need to redevelop that property. Um, and this is a, a great tool for that. So that's something that I'm working with city staff on and whether we should include that or not. Um, if that's going to be included, that will be included in the final presentation uh, that will be distributed prior to the next meeting. Um, but uh, other than the only other property that's included that is developed is the Mount View Inn slash Coppelstone Inn. Um, only because of being contiguous, keeping the district contiguous. Um. That is a developed property. We do not anticipate to gain much increment from it. Um, it will not be a burden upon um, tid number six either by taking that out. So um, some, so that's the only reason why we, we talked about that. Um, next uh, page here is, um, I know it's a little hard to see from standing back a little bit, but we show the half mile boundary around uh, the, the proposed boundary of tid number nine. And what that means is, is that we can do improvements within that half mile boundary that benefit the tid. Um, so that's just a kind of a, more of a explanation of, of why we would, we would show that. Um, a little close up of the area that's currently known as Keystone Development, which is part of tid number five. And we put the, the aerial on the, as on the backdrop of this because to show that we do are in fact not having any developed properties in here. Um, the only property that uh, is potentially developable right now is thirty-one hundred dash two hundred. Been proposed as potential site for a car wash, uh, but nothing has officially has come through in terms of a building permit. Um, but we're using that one as being, keeping the, you know, everything contiguous. Um, otherwise the remainder of the property is undeveloped. Now, a question did come up about some of these lots here that do have water and sewer at their uh, lot line. And why do they need to be included? But because they also have been sitting vacant for a long time, too. A lot of these lots have been sitting vacant for almost twenty years. And so what we have included is development incentives that include site development to help encourage site development. So, and we'll touch base on that a little bit. Uh, next, uh, we have a blow up of the area that's known as tid number six. And once again, you can see that there are uh, very few, if, if none, um, uh, developed properties here. And once again, on the very south part there is where the Mark I am property is, and we'll be discussing whether or not to include that or not. But uh, that would be a good opportunity to redevelop that property. Um, and of this area here, there is a little bit of property that's owned by the city, but most of it is vacant agricultural property. Um, existing land uses currently in the majority of the properties, and I know for those of you looking up here, it's hard to see. Um, but the, a lot of the property is uh, a light green color, which means that it is agriculture. So it's undeveloped. So further uh, bolstering our discussion about how this land is not developed right now. Um. Some of the proposed public works and improvements that are going to be included um, in this, that are included in this project plan are property right away and easement acquisition. Uh, site preparation activities, we just talked about that. Some of those develop, those lots that have a street and water and sewer. Uh, utilities, which will include sanitary sewer, water main and storm, stormwater. Electric, gas, communications. Uh, we can do street and street capes, scapes. Uh, community development, um, which is typically our development incentive, which is a cash grant. Um, one of the key points to this developer agreement and according to the TIF law is that for any developer incentive slash cash grant, a developer agreement has to be signed and on file with the city uh, prior to that uh, taking into effect. And then we have some miscellaneous items, um, projects outside of tid number nine. Um, we talked about that, that's within the half mile radius as well as water or wastewater projects that are necessary to support growth within the district. Um, for example, if the city uh, needs to upgrade their wastewater treatment facility, but there's no growth out here. We can't put any of the money from tid number nine to the sewer plant. However, if we bring in an industry that is generating a lot of wastewater and we need some uh, expansion at the wastewater treatment plant, we can use some of the funds from tid number nine to help support that. Same thing with a water tower. If we need another water tower, that's needed because of development within the TIF, we can help pay for it. Uh, professional service and organizational costs are allowed as um, administrative and promotion costs as well as financing costs. Uh, proposed uh, land uses um, in tid number nine. So once again, I know it's a little hard to see up there, but we've got the color coding on here. We've got properties that have been identified as industrial use, as commercial use and residential use. Um, very in line with previous plans, tid number five, tid number six and the uh, the city's uh, comprehensive plan. Um. Once again, this is a improperly labeled slide. This is supposed to say tid number nine proposed improvements. Um, really the only proposed improvements that we're showing on here because this is going to be a developer driven TIF district are the potential for uh, the extension of Enterprise Road. Right, which is in orange and then um, Vision Drive, which is in yellow. And once again, these have been streets that have been, been on the city's master plans and in other plans uh, for twenty plus years. So currently our detailed list of estimated project costs. Um, so we're looking at uh, development incentives, which is property development. This is for raw property. We used a hundred and forty thousand dollars per acre, which is in line with uh, three projects that we've done within the last eighteen months. We've got development incentives for site development. And these are for properties that maybe already have a street or water and sewer, but they need further development uh, to make them happen. Uh, we have land acquisition and assembly, um, if necessary. Uh, we have industry park expansion, once again, if there are funds available. Uh, utility and street extensions. Uh, water storage improvements, water supply improvements, and then professional services, administration and organizational costs. So we're, so theoretically, there could be up to just on under forty-four million dollars of tid expenses. If the money is there, if a developer comes in. The intent once again is that if the only way that the city would be doing a project would be one in support of a business to coming in or if there are tid funds available to be able to do something. So some development assumptions. Um, at last night's plan commission meeting, we had a lot of discussion about development assumptions. And we show properties here that uh, could develop um, within the district. And do we know exactly that these properties are in develop? No. Um, we can forecast out maybe five years, but not twenty years, but we have to forecast out twenty years because that's part of the creating a project plan. Um, so that's essentially what this table is, is it kind of goes over the different assumptions that we did, that we used to create this plan. Um, we picked some properties, especially in the first five years that um, uh, Paydeck, um, specifically Abby has been talking to people about. So we included them. And then we know some properties that may develop and they're further out, you know, in the, in that six to twenty year range. But once again, I mean, we have to show some projections um, and if they're, basically it's, it's educated assumptions is what they are. So looking at a map um, of uh, of where those potential developments could be. Um, development one is in the upper right hand corner there, up in the Keystone Development would be a residential development. Um, Abby um, and the city has currently been talking with a potential developer for that property. Um, who is very interested, especially with the ability to have um, TIF uh, as a way to help out. Um, we have the area that's just north of Walmart Menard, which is in blue. Uh, that area there um, is once again is a developed area. However, nothing has happened that's been developed for over fifteen, over ten years, um, but nothing has happened. Um, we have the potential for the car wash area. Um, the next circle kind of pops up in the middle of the screen. That is the industrial park or industry park, excuse me. This is the same uh, six lots that Cummins was looking to develop um, a couple of years ago. Uh, we feel that if we have them, that property within the district uh, and we are, have the ability to offer a developer incentive for some site development that maybe if Cummins would like to um, come back with their project uh, that we can help buffer some of those additional costs that they incurred. Uh, we have uh, prop, uh, property on the south side of the district down by Enterprise Drive. Once again, the owner of that property um, would be interested in doing uh, some development of the property, especially if there's water and sewer available. We have um, the property just north of the hospital uh, that uh, was just recently developed. We have the property just west of the hospital. It's in blue. Um, that's a residential area that has been discussed several times. Um, we have the property to the east of the hospital. That's owned currently by Jim Harms. Um, nothing has been proposed there, but that's just an example of what would happen if we would do a, take a forty acre parcel and develop it. And then finally, we have some properties at the end of Means Drive and Vision Drive. Uh, that could be potentially be a project, but all of those properties were included in our development assumptions. Now, in twenty years, will all of those properties be developed? Probably not, but we're hoping that some of them are, and we're hoping that there are properties that were not listed that are developed to help further, further development within um, Platteville. So next on to our tid increment projection. So using our developer, development assumptions, uh, we created up to sixty-five million dollars of potential tax base increase, which uh, which equates to um, approximately one point four million dollars in tax increment at the end of twenty years. Of course, everything has to develop, but that would be that that's the potential here for um, the city of Platteville. So looking at our cash flow performer. And I know there's a lot of numbers on here, but the key is in the lower right hand corner where it shows a positive number of thirty thousand dollars. So all of the, the potential developer cash grants that we're talking about, all of the professional administrative promotional expenses and also all of the future industry park expansions, et cetera. In this scenario, the way we've done this is we show that it closes out in a positive. Um. Right now, as I've, as I've mentioned multiple times, if there's no money in the TIF, TIF district or that as increment, we're not spending any money. Um, if there's money, then we can look at spending it. Um, this is different from tid number six. Tid number six was a build it and they will come. And this is pay as you go. So basically someone comes in, wants to do a project, uh, they invest the money, they create the tax base. As they generate the taxes, uh, they recoup all or a portion of those to, to pay back their, their loans. Uh, finally, um, this is important for the overlying tax jurisdictions. This would be their future increments. So of that one point four million dollars, um, currently that property is generating just under fifty thousand dollars. So we're looking at a, about a, it's one million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar increase in taxes generated off of these properties if they were to develop in an orderly fashion like we presented. And what that means to the city that is in twenty years after this we close uh, the city's tax base alone would increase five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So that's really what this is all about. It's not about, it, it is about providing, getting developers in here and getting properties to develop. But really it is generating a larger tax base and generating more property taxes um, to help fund city projects. So um, that was a very quick overview of the project plan. Um. What the plan is, the schedule wise is uh, after tonight, um, based upon comments, if there are any. We will make uh, some modifications to the project plan. We will be sending that to the city attorney for his um, review. Um, with the idea that at the next council meeting in two weeks from tonight that we will be able to pass a creation resolution that essentially creates tid number nine. So with that, are there any questions?
Questions?
I, I have a.
Sure.
And Dan, excuse me, you know me. Layman's terms, please. Um. We've heard the term, and I know it was explained. Reason that this is being proposed now is because of the twelve percent.
Yes, correct.
Can you explain that again?
Yes. So right now, the, a community cannot have, cannot create a new tax district. If more than twelve percent of the tid increment, the, the tid increment is greater than twelve percent of the city's equalized value. So for the past few years, because of the success of tid number five along with tid number seven and tid number six, the city of Platteville has been over that twelve percent threshold. This year, because of e- equalization rates or revaluations, whatever the reason is, Platteville has dipped below twelve percent. So we don't know what the equalized value or the equalized uh, ratio is going to be. So we may jump over that twelve percent again. So that's why we're taking advantage of this opportunity right now because we are under twelve percent. The other option is, is if, if we decide not to pass this district, we wait two years um, until two thousand twenty-five, possibly two thousand twenty-six, if tid number five would be extended one year for housing um, before we could create a new tax district. So that would be two to three years of potentially missed opportunities of unable to incentivize a developer to come into Platteville.
And I understand that. Thank you for explaining that.
But, but isn't the real, the other real reason is that we don't have a tax increment district right now that can provide an incentive. We have tids. But they are past their, their life of being able to do new projects.
Yep, exactly.
So.
It's seven actually could still um, have project costs, but nothing out in the area of the industry park.
And tid seven is the downtown.
That's correct.
The uh, redevelopment tip.
And then just one final question. It went to plan commission last night. Was that the second presentation or the first one?
That was the second, we've, we had talked that the previous plan commission um, about that last night was the public hearing to discuss the project plan.
Okay, because when, was it just two weeks ago? We, we weren't aware of what properties were going in. So was that? I'm assuming it was approved by the plan commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then before that, the procedure, it went to joint.
Yep, we met with them, yep, we met with them approximately two weeks ago.
And, and schools, Southwest Tech County?
City. Yep, there's a city representative, which was Nicola, but she was out that day. So Clint said, um, sat in for her. Um, there was Bob Keeney from Grant County, uh, Karen Campbell from Southwest Tech, um. Uh, Jim Babel from the school district, and then Troy Maggian was the at large member for the city of Platteville.
Okay. And the joint review board approved it, so.
That was, that's an informational meeting only for them.
Oh.
They will not do the final approval until after the city council acts on it. So that will be within forty-five days after the city acts and the joint review board will meet and review and approve.
Alright. And you have made, I mean, as this prog, as this has moved along, you have made changes. So you have listened and made uh, and altered things.
Yep.
A little bit.
Yep. As a result of previous plan commission comments as well as joint review board.
And, and even last night, property under comments.
Yep.
Right. Hey, any other questions? Otherwise, we, we don't have action to take tonight. Action on this would be at the next uh, council meeting, the uh, July. I don't have my calendar up.
It's July twenty-fifth.
July twenty. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, the next item on our agenda then for discussion tonight is the position, the petition to expand the RLO overlay uh, area. Joe?
The RLO overlay um area, Joe.
Yes, um, so we received a petition signed by the owners of twenty three properties. Um, in the northwest portion of the city that have requested. Uh, to be included in the RLO limited occupancy residential overlay district. Um, so the petition includes only those three twenty three properties. It does not request. The addition of any properties that were not included in that petition as far as the signatures. So it'd be a hundred percent of the owners that are making a request um via that petition. Um, so all the properties are currently zoned R one, so this would just be adding that our little overlay district on top of their base zoning. Um, so if you recall, we had a a meeting the spring about uh from a property owner that wanted to be removed from that district. And you may recall from that uh discussion at that time that the. The main reason for having that overlay district is that it it uh places a a limitation on the individuals or occupants. That can live in a property within that district. Uh, basically, it changes the definition of what a family is in that district. Um, what it boils down to is a normal property, residential property outside of that district. Can have a maximum of four unrelated individuals that live in a dwelling unit. Within that district, it's limited to maximum of two unrelated individuals. So there are some other minor distinctions, but that really becomes the the main difference between the two. So um as as the case was when that district was created back in two thousand twelve. It was really a property owner driven process. Uh, the neighbors were looking to try to. Alleviate what they had some concerns at that time about the encroachment of rental properties into their area. Primarily driven by, at that time, was uh the growth of the university. Um, this is kind of the same way. It's a neighborhood driven approach. Where they were just trying to fill in some of the gaps, um what they consider gaps in that district in their neighborhood. Um, so that's the request is to expand that overly district. Uh, the plan commission did consider this uh uh last night and did recommend approval. Any questions?
Questions. Ken?
Well, um. I looked at this and um. I think you need to look over some of these addresses. I I just was curious about some of them. So for example, the the easy one to look at, uh you you have um. Ten ninety Union Street, and I find the number to be eleven ninety Union Street. And then uh another one was Western Avenue. And I don't know, I couldn't find five thirty Western Avenue, so. I guess that my general comment is to check these over to see if these numbers are correct. For our street addresses for the twenty three properties. So I didn't go through them all. So now then my my question is uh, since we had this early. Time of about, I think we roughly had about a hundred and eleven people sign up the first time. Is that, am I remembering correctly?
Uh, yes, uh, that sounds right.
We had a hundred and eleven, so now I have additional twenty three, and some of those are going to be. Mixed in with the hundred and eleven, so will this become? One big petition, or you're just gonna have, how is that gonna be looked at?
So th- this current petition is only regarding the twenty three properties.
I understand, but when when we look at the total picture. So we won't, in the future, we won't be bothering with which petition they came from.
No, no, this is just a change in zoning of those particular properties. And just for clarification, the uh eleven ninety on the map is eleven ninety Main Street. The ten ninety Union Street is actually not on the map. That was a a recent land split and we just uh. Uh, provided the address to that property recently, so it's not on the map yet.
Un- Union Street.
It's uh basically where Union Street and Perry Drive meet. It was part of ten eighty Union Street. That was.
Going up. I'm going up there.
If you look at the map, it doesn't have an address on it. That's why.
There's a ten ninety Union listed. And so on the map, what I see on Union is eleven ninety.
Yeah, which is not included. So on the map, there's a corner, property on the corner of Union Street and Perry, where Perry Drive meet. It was labeled as ten eighty Union, and I kind of colored in half of that parcel. Cause that parcel was split just recently. And the new vacant lot was given an address of ten ninety.
This is where he's at. Uh, and what we're looking at is. Parcel right here. This was just a new split. So there is no address listed, and Joe is saying that this property here now is ten ninety Union.
Okay, I'm just gonna take a bath. We have this.
This is eleven ninety here.
This one's ten ninety.
Okay, I can't read it above the ink.
Well, that's because it was just split, so he just added an address for it.
Oh.
It was a property that just was subdivided. It was just subdivided. So it probably isn't on any of. I don't, it probably isn't.
Maps have not been updated since we've.
Yeah, the G I.
Given that address.
So you're you're gonna update the map for next time?
Uh, I can do that, but I I'm waiting to update the overall maps until we figure out if this gets approved or not. So I don't want to update it and then do it again.
He wants to update that map up there.
Alright.
Gonna do that within two weeks?
Uh, no, I'll do that one after this gets voted.
Okay, any other questions? Being the other questions. Um, I guess uh the last item on our agenda is the ever present. Budget and the twenty twenty four proposed budget time.
Thank you. So yeah, this is the time of year that we um start thinking about budget for twenty twenty four. And uh the first step in that process is to set a timeline uh for particularly for meetings. Um, to get the council's input on when we are tentatively scheduling uh those meetings associated with the budget. So um I've highlighted on here um meetings that will impact members of the com- common council. Uh, so on Tuesday, the eighth would be um. Uh, uh work session to um consider uh the strategic plan goals for twenty twenty four. Um, and that would be part of a regularly scheduled council meeting. Um, so that would be either before or after the work session, uh the council meeting, the work session would be. Um, and then uh August the twenty second will be the uh presentation of the comprehensive CIP plan. Not to be confused with the CIP budget. Then um September the eleventh will be uh the uh tentative date for presentation. Of the proposed airport budget to the airport commission. Uh, Tuesday, the twelfth, uh common council adoption of the comprehensive CIP plan. Wednesday, the thirteenth, a presentation of the proposed uh utility budget to the Water and Sewer Commission. Um, and then again, a special meeting on October the third. Uh, for review of the CIP budget. Um, and then October the ninth, the regularly scheduled airport commission approval of the airport budget. Uh, Tuesday, October the tenth, uh regularly scheduled common council meeting. Uh, for the city manager budget presentation to the common council. And then on the uh Wednesday, the eleventh, uh common, I'm sorry, Water and Sewer Commission approval of the utility budget. October the seventeenth, again, a special meeting uh for common council review of the department operational budgets. And then a regularly scheduled common council meeting on October the twenty fourth. Um, it for uh review session uh of the operational budgets if needed. Um, in recent history, we have not needed that extra meeting, but um just in case we could have a work session before or after the regularly. Scheduled common council meeting. So um and then finally, the actual public hearing for adoption of the budget on November the twenty eighth. So again, um, this uh this table uh provides the common council with a snapshot of um what we are recommending. For meetings for the budget, including um some additional meetings as. Uh, represented by those asterisks. So now I would just ask the council to review those dates. Um, and bring back to the next meeting any dates that would not work. For you, so we can make sure that we have a quorum for all of those dates.
Okay, so as I look through the budget timeline, the August eighth meeting is a regular meeting. Second Tuesday of the month.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I should have taken the asterisk off.
Alright, and Tuesday, August twenty second is a regularly scheduled meeting. The fourth went, the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Did you say August twenty second? I didn't.
Yes. Twenty second.
Yes.
Okay, and then as I continue to look through the yellow highlighted ones, September twelfth is also a regularly scheduled meeting.
Uh, yes.
Okay, and then the next one I see is Tuesday, October eighth. Which is.
October third.
October third.
Yeah.
Me. Yeah, if that would be a special meeting.
That's a special meeting.
Alright, so people need to understand that it would be October. Third is the first time on this budget timeline that we have a meeting that's not on a council date.
That's correct.
Okay, then Tuesday, October tenth, a week later, is our regularly scheduled meeting.
Yes.
And uh then we have Tuesday, the seventeenth. So basically, we're talking about all Tuesdays in. In October, because the seventeenth would also be not a regularly scheduled meeting.
Correct.
So that would be another time to put on your calendar that's above and beyond the second and fourth. And then the twenty fourth is of course, yeah, a regularly scheduled meeting. And I believe the meetings in November are uh also regularly scheduled meetings.
Yes, and that's just the one.
So there's.
Number, which is um the public hearing.
On the fourth, so there's really just two additional meetings. That would be on October third and October seventeenth. So I would say mark your calendar for Tuesdays in October. Because we'll be uh doing numbers. Alright, and the rest of these may apply to your committee if it's water and sewer, may apply to your committee if you're on the airport commission. May apply to a committee or a commissioner or board you serve on. Um, but other than that, the common council dates fall on regularly scheduled meetings except the acto- two October. Activities, okay. Will we adopt this next time?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we will formally adopt this time budget timeline next time at our next meeting. Any questions on it, Ken?
And so you, when we adopt this, two weeks, you're gonna give out. At least one copy that I can. Put up on my wall and look at it and see where I'm where I'm supposed to be.
Sure, absolutely.
Otherwise, looking at it a piece of paper and looking at this thing. I'm not gonna go to that thing and look and search for it. I just put it on the wall. I have a nail on the wall for it, and that's where I'll do it.
Makes me very happy that you're gonna put it on the wall.
Nonsense to remember.
Yes, we can definitely get you a copy to put on the wall.
No.
Okay, any other questions about the budget timeline? Otherwise, that'll be on our agenda. And by the time we uh adopt this, you'll already have completed all the July work.
In theory.
In theory, alright.
I'm gonna get a a copy to put on my wall too. I just need a little bit larger font than here.
Okay.
Let me have this see it.
Mine will be pink, thank you.
But we'll get a copy for everybody.
Alright. Uh, we've done that there's only one more motion that I need tonight.
Move to adjourn.
Second it.
Alright, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Lynn to adjourn. Uh, Candace will vote.
Pop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Doss?
Us.
Motion carries.
Thank you.